So, power meeting back to order. This is the work session. Item 2A is shooting range.
And the sheriff is here to give an introduction summary, I think, and then Dustin is also here to kind of talk about that.
Okay. Good morning. Darren Campbell, Reno County Sheriff. First off, thank you for allowing us to come and taking time out of your day to listen to our presentation and talking about this project. One of the things that I did when I first took over as a sheriff was raise our training budget. Our training budget was kind of hurting and I think three of the pillars that leads, that builds a great foundation to professionalism and provide an excellent service to the citizens is training, education, and experience. This project is going to fall in line with that and I think that the results based on last week's jury trial proved worthy. As I said through the trial, I listened to all the training and education that these deputies have been able to go to has done phenomenally, set the bar way high for law enforcement across the state, I think. So, again, this training facility, the project is going to play into that role and hopefully will help facilitate the projected future for providing that excellent service to Reno County. Dustin Van Syke is our range master. He's been a range master for several years now and heads up our firearms program. He has done a phenomenal job of working with Hutton and putting together this project and I'm going to turn it over to him and let him brief his PowerPoint that he put together. Good morning.
Good morning. It's Dustin Van Syke. I've worked for Sheriff Campbell. Like he said, I've been a range master for several years now and this project started a long time ago before we got to this point. This is really where we came from. This was the original range facility that the sheriff's office FOP volunteers built in 1985 and this is where we were at until 2020, I think. It was down there off of 61 Highway, kind of in this area here. The range house was built by hand by our FOP members as well as the berm and everything else that was out there at the time. So, as early as 2018, we started trying to come up with funds in order to enhance our training program. Part of the original plan called for just a new range house on that existing property where we were previously at, as well as some upgrades to shooting surface for safety and some other various things like that. Through that process, we kind of failed in some contract negotiations and we ended up moving out of that facility. But there were some other inherent problems that existed on that site anyway. So, moving forward, and we're going to talk about this a little bit, we have a lot more opportunity to do a lot more than just a range facility. Part of the problem with the old facility is there was a high pressure natural gas pipeline which ran just on the east side of the berm. So, the berm location was fixed, we couldn't move it. We couldn't utilize a lot of the space that was out there, which really reduced our ability to develop it into more of a training facility as opposed to just a range. A little important, we were able to locate a new piece of property that's owned by Reno County. It's landfill property, it's off Mohawk Road just south of where their new scale house is at. It doesn't have a lot of the same restrictions that we had previously on the old property, which is allowing us to put in more of a training facility and not just a range to accommodate all kinds of various other trainings that we're required to do throughout the year. The star right there shows the physical address, 1314 South Mohawk Road. If the map is old enough, it does not show the new scale house, which would be up here to the north. This road is closed and there's a roundabout here, which gives just a singular access off of Blanchard going north. So, to date, after locating the property, we were able to go through the planning and zoning process to get a conditional use permit to use that property as a firearms range. We've been working with SCS Engineering, who does the landfill engineering already and is already contracted to the county. And to date, we've done, spent a little over $24,000 just in engineering fees for the dirtwork to build the berms. They are extremely large and that is for safety purposes. We've also had the soil inspection done and completed the wastewater permitting so that we can put a lagoon and have functional bathrooms on the property. And we also worked with the landfill again when they had concrete crushed in order to 2,000 tons in order to build the roads and parking lots for the facility. A lot of that money was paid for through donation money, which I'd previously raised, but the total came out just for the crushed concrete at $19,600, which has already been paid. We've already put in a culvert and a driveway access, which the landfill utilizes to get their equipment on and off the property. And we conducted interviews and we ultimately contracted with Hutton Construction for this project moving forward. And we've had some initial design meetings and we've got some tentative budgets laid out. And currently, the landfill is working on constructing the berms and I have some pictures later on for you about where it's at in its current state. The initial project that came in, we asked basically our entire wish list, everything that we would ever want on the property, with the exception of the unused space in the bottom right-hand corner that we have future plans for. The initial cost came in anywhere between 2.2 and 2.3 million dollars, which was an excessive amount of money, so we made some cuts. We cut everything except the training pad for the firearms and the training building itself and we reduced the size of the training building, which brought us down to 1.5 million. This is the outside look of what the building would look like. It's a steel constructed building. It's got a brick facade and the rest of the building is metal. This just shows the back and we're going to talk about some of these features. This ladder is here for a purpose. It shows the back of the facility and the internal layout with restrooms, utility building, garage, storage, office space, a vault, for obvious reasons. We might need to securely store some things out there and have restricted access, as well as a small kitchenette. So, what the inside of the classroom would look like, it's a very large classroom to accommodate a great number of law enforcement officials or whoever would need to be using the facility. And this has been a 25-yard awning that covers part of the firearms range. Those were the only two items that we left in that's there for the request. So, some of the features of the building is when we sat down to design the building, the building itself we designed to be its own training environment. There's hallways and doors. If you're not familiar with how law enforcement works, we have to do a lot of training in order to keep ourselves safe or go into various types of situations. We know we have to know how to handle anything that's thrown at us. So, we built the building or designed the building to give us all manner of ability to do training just with the building itself. The ladder I showed you previously allows for SWAT team personnel or other safety officers or whoever to actually access the roof where they have an elevated position in order to observe or conduct training from that position. The platform or the awning that you saw for the 25-yard line also has a similar feature to allow a safety officer and/or SWAT personnel to get up there depending on what the training calls for. The awning additionally will be able to accommodate lights because we don't operate just during the daytime. We operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year regardless of what the environment is outside and we have to be able to put lights, which alter the environment and our training ability. So, we'd be able to put light bars and flashing lights and strobes and all kinds of stuff under there in order to change that environment as we need it. So, moving forward from just a range facility, this is not an all-inclusive list, but this is a long list of all kinds of training that we do throughout the year. Some of it not every year, some of it multiple times throughout the year, but we teach and host and do a lot of our internal training to make sure that everybody that works for the sheriff's office is getting the best training that we can provide. And being a county building and being a classroom, there's absolutely no reason why any other county entity wouldn't be able to utilize the classroom for whatever they need to use As far as other agencies, we've worked with a region, the South Central Region for the SWAT program. We also have a lot of other agencies within our own county and other local law enforcement, even if they're outside of our county, that we've either worked with and/or trained. And I'm not going to say this is an all-inclusive list either, but we've had a lot of agencies from around the state and our own county that we either train with on a very regular basis, provide training for, or work with depending on what the situation calls for, either having other teams from around come in to help us or we go out to other counties and help them. Our agency works with everybody that we can as often as we can. In a large-scale incident, we have no control over how many personnel we have available, but we are going to have to ask for resources depending on how large that is. If we don't work with them, then we don't work as well together. So, we have to work with them on a regular basis to ensure that we have the ability to function properly even if we don't work together every day. So, other than training areas, this building can do quite a bit of things for the county and the community other than just law enforcement-based. Myself and another instructor, we went around and did trading with most of the county departments where county employees are not necessarily in the courthouse and have the ability under county policy to carry firearms on their own while working here. So, we are an asset to the county because we have several firearms instructors and that's what we do for a living, is teach people how to shoot and teach them what the law is regarding uses of force and how to protect themselves efficiently. There's absolutely no reason why we can't provide instructors for the people that choose to carry firearms while they're working for the county and provide some level of one-on-one instruction and ultimately have to give them a place to practice. There are not a lot of places to go to public ranges around here for county employees without driving all the way to Wichita, or they'd have to pay a fee or go on a weekend when the Wildlife and Parks range is open, but it's limited. We also conduct a lot of active shooter classes, not just in the law enforcement world, but I've been in probably every school in Reno County at some point or another teaching active shooter. We're limited on what we can do inside their schools when they have all their equipment present, but what if we had the ability to bring teachers out to our facility and put them through other types of trainings to make them better prepared if they ever had an active shooter incident at a school? That's something we would be able to provide in our training facility, not just a range. Our FOP lodge, which is all volunteers, I've talked to the Wildlife and Parks about hunter education in Reno County. There's only one other site that teaches hunter education in Reno County. It's up at the Kansas Gun Club and it's like four times a year. I have a lot of volunteers, we've already filled out applications, I just need to get back with the state. I've been waiting for yes or no on this project before we move forward. If we have a place to do it, then with the blessing of the sheriff, we would be able to host hunter education classes and interact with new hunters in Reno County to make sure that they are operating safely when they're out in our jurisdiction. It gives us an opportunity to interact with the community at a different level. It would all be done through volunteer time with the use of the facility with the approval of the sheriff. And related to the homicide trial that just happened last week ago, a couple other points. Under criminal investigations, when we actually take firearms off the street from convicted offenders and such, we're required to test fire those firearms. They have to be a functional firearm in order for them to be charged with it. If it's an antique or non-functional or a toy gun, then it doesn't qualify. So, we have to take all these firearms that we take off the street and we have to have a place where we can test fire. We have to do that on video. So, we do need a place for prosecution purposes in order for us to complete our investigations. And additionally, with the right setup and the right equipment and the right amount of time, there is testing that we can do at a facility in order to assist in prosecutions with shotguns, for example, being able to identify a minimum distance between a victim and a suspect. So, there's a lot more than just a training facility. It's kind of an all-use type of building. Currently, and these are pictures from before it got cold, that's some pictures of the landfill equipment, them out there doing great work. And one of the reasons why it's taken them so long to get the dirt up is because of how big it is. It's purposely designed and specified to be a certain height to provide safety for anybody around. So, I think when these pictures are taken, that's the berm is about 20 feet high. It's still got another six or seven feet to go. That's pretty much my spiel.
What, Randy, what are we doing today? We're just getting an update? Let's make decisions?
Right. There's no decisions. The point today was to kind of, for all commissioners, the five commissioners to understand this project that, not the scope of the project wasn't approved, but the county commission in the past had said, had okayed going with Hutton Construction, okayed, had, you know, said that yes, we can go out, the sheriff's office can be at the landfill and build a shooting range. What came up was how do we get a training facility and that's why we were working with Hutton Construction. Hutton Construction is on hold right now. We have paid them for some of their work, but they're on hold until we know a budget and whether, how far the commission wants to go with this range. The recommendation is to find a way and kind of consensus to give me direction to work on budgeting, financing, of how we can afford this without raising taxes. And if you guys are okay with this project going forward, continuing to go forward. Obviously, the berms are being built, there's going to be a range, so that can't be scrapped, but the building part and the tower. We need kind of direction of what you're going to be willing, might be willing to approve when it comes back to a commission meeting for action with, at that point, financing options. One of the other things is if this becomes a priority for the county commission, I have talked with one of our US Senator staff and we could ask for federal money to help pay for some of this, not guaranteed anything, but we could see if it could be put on as an earmark, direct funding from the federal government. But we would, it would need to be considered a priority of the Reno County Commission to get very far in that process.
I might mention for you that are new, is we held a session, I interviewed three or four different companies with regard to this project and heard from those different companies and saw some pictures of some highly elaborate units that other companies had done. And we finally decided on, after our interview and our discussion, had decided upon Hutton, they're from Wichita, to do this initial project drawing and estimates and so forth.
Randy, just to be clear, the, so we've approved the initial plans and we, is there a budget for the shooting range and is there, it looks like there's a larger budget that's been reduced already for the entire facility. So, like, to me, there's like three. What's, what the commission approved?
The commission approved the design, the design phase for Hutton to come meet with staff and yet preliminary designs. Now, those are not ready to go out to bid, of course. Hutton would be waiting to see what the budget is and if the county, county wants to move forward. That's the, the budget part, we have some reserve money and there's $75,000 budgeted each year in the sheriff's budget for range improvements. One of my initial thoughts was if we did a lease purchase program, 15, 20 years, $75,000 spread out over that time would pay for a good portion of it. May not pay for 100%. That's where federal funding may come in or the use of reserve money to just cover it with some extra cash that we may have on hand without having any increases in the taxes because of this. Now, saying that, there's obviously going to be maintenance, but I think the sheriff's office, I think they kind of, in maintenance, know that they'll work together to keep this building, if it's approved, in very good shape, clean and ready to go for, at all times. Commissioner Friesen, was there another part?
No, I think, have we grouped it out? Like, is there just the range and the building or is it, it's just one project?
It's one project. The, so, when Dustin was explaining, SCS engineers, that's the engineers that the landfill has and we partnered with them and used them to help design the berm for the dirtwork, not the building. So, that part, and I believe, and Dustin, you guys, and Sheriff, you may have used some of your general fund money on range improvements plus other funds that you may have or donations to pay for that.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some donated money that we've kind of pulled together. Dustin has done some grant stuff, some minor local grants that have donated money. And that's kind of the fundings that we use to get to where we are.
So that was a different part of, that was before we got into the discussion of what building and interviewing architects and companies such as Hutton to move forward. So that is one phase. That's kind of on its own. It's completely separate from the building and tower that we're talking about.
Well, let's just go around. Commissioner Moe, do you have questions yet or?
Yeah. If we're going with a lease purchase deal, what would the interest rates be? Who's, who's funding it upfront? The money's got to be there to build the thing, physically put it there. If you're going to pay for it over a period of time, somebody's going to want something for the use of his money. So what's the interest going to be?
We have not gone, not knowing the total costs and whether there is the, I guess, appetite of the commission to continue to move forward on this, we haven't contacted banks to really get into those details. That would be brought forth at a later time when we talk to the local banks. Another option, and I would need to check private bond counsel or Patrick, is if the county used reserve funds, but then had general fund replenish that out of the sheriff's budget that's already in the budget to kind of, that way, that cash is replenished for future needs, other needs other than the shooting range. And so we would have enough to front that money and then pay ourselves back or strictly a lease purchase, talk to a bank about how we can make that work and let the local banks, you know, for, I don't know what the interest rates are right now.
Sounds like it'd be a long-term loan.
It would be probably 15 years. I think the sheriff and I kind of had a discussion. We didn't, we don't want it to be so long that it's far past our times that next administration's, you know, sheriff's going to be like, well, why are they doing this? Why are we still paying for this? So we want it to be somewhat limited on the length of time.
So you're confident being reelected?
I think once it's said, I think the sheriff, the next sheriff is stuck with it. You know, I, I don't agree with the, the large budget that they, they set on it and Dustin and I had some long conversations about it. The bureaucracy that we're held to has kind of placed it there, but I'm, I'm still interested in working with them to lower that, you know? And that's just an estimate. That's not actual.
Mr. Parks?
Well, there's a couple of questions I had talking about the wastewater in the lagoon and how, what's the proximity to the landfill and how do they get rid of their wastewater?
They stay in the septic system.
Oh, they do. They don't have a lagoon. I thought if they already had a lagoon, we could pump the top water or something to that degree. Okay. In the training facility, of course, we got a Kansas law enforcement training and what's the scope of the different training here? If you can just bring me up to speed on what this training facility, how it differs from that one?
So, so the training facility, the Kansas law enforcement training center, it just goes into just the basics because they shuffle so many officers through there. Their curriculum has changed so much and the fact that they now have many classes at different levels on campus. Like, we even do drivers training out there and it's hard for us to even schedule to use the, the driving range. So, but everything they do is just basic. They don't get into, you know, intermediate or expert level stuff as far as SWAT, the skills, the training, being able to bring everybody. Hutchinson and Reno County is kind of a central, centralized location of the South Central region that's developed by Department of Homeland Security. So the 19 regions that are in the South Central region, we're, we're about in the middle. There's been talk about the Department of Homeland Security investing funds at some point maybe to centralize local SWAT teams from Pratt, Harvey, everywhere else that hasn't to come and do training. There's just preliminary talks, nothing of a set stone or anything, but it was just some ideas that have been thrown around if this thing moves forward and gets developed.
Well, I see you visualize bringing more in than just that. Would that be something, it'd be more of a contractual thing in the future that maybe they would pay for services as well? Are you just going to provide them under?
That hasn't been, that hasn't been.
Well, I mean, it'd give some, maybe some return income or something, but I think it'd be great to be able to train in-house some people from other communities.
A lot, a lot of the MOUs that we have with other agencies are, say, like, a couple years ago, when the Lyons police officer that got shot in the face on the driveway, they basically popped the Red Star Cluster and agencies from all over the state arrived and there's probably about eight to 10 agencies that were there. Once we, us and Hutchinson Police Department took command and started moving forward with a, with a centralized plan, when we have those MOUs with those people, we don't, we don't, it's on us. We just come together to achieve a common goal and that, that cost is on us because they don't have that resource or funding typically.
Well, I do know in my heart that things are going to get worse in the future and that specialized training is going to, there's a lot of validity to it. And I've probably visited with you, Darren, on several occasions, I truly believe that we need to do everything we can to keep training and keep everything in society the way it's headed. I don't think any of us would be, would have our head in the sand if we thought it wasn't going to get a little worse than it is today. And so in that regard, I back you with that kind of stuff for certainly myself. But, and, and so what kind of funds? That was either question, they had what kind of funds? You talked, you had some funds, have them been exhausted or do you still have some reserves for moving forward at this point with that or?
So we, we actually put some stuff in the budget. Last year when we did the budget and it got approved, there was, the funds were set basically to move forward because that's how the, you know, we wanted to make sure that the funding was going to be there, that it was going to increase taxes and that we could provide it. And so that's why it was set in our budget as it is. For this year going forward, it's already there.
That's the $75,000, that's just for range improvements or?
Right, it was already in there, yeah.
Now, Hutton did provide about 12 Department of Justice or thereabouts grants. However, upon research, Dustin, most of them were all closed out for the year already. The, the applications had to be in at a certain time and everything had closed out and wasn't applicable because there's certain, certain restrictions on grants that don't allow that.
Mr. Hurst?
One's a little mechanical part of this is what about potable water availability out there?
So what I would like to do, I'd like to, we've already got potable water at the, at the landfill and just to, just to pipe it in across, it's going to be, but it, but it needs to be necessary.
That'd be up at the City of Hutch, their water line that goes out there to them.
Yeah, okay.
That, for curiosity, because I know what the water conditions like out there, so that's what I was.
Correct, yeah. Even a well's not potable, so, I mean, just for law and purposes to put one to do that, but as far as, you know, drinking and bathroom usage to be piped in.
The other thing is I was, I like the idea that you took a look at it yourself for the purpose is, well, these two projects, we really don't need to try to look at right now. So taking some funds out of the, even though you'd like to have them, I appreciate the sound judgment on that. And my question goes along a lot with what Commissioner Parks said, is, is there income potential to, possibilities to cover your operational, your cleaning, your, the maintenance, that type of thing? Is there, is there income potential and do you see a chance for income potential to cover those costs of maintenance and, and that goes along with that?
So, so when we, when we host training, a lot of times we, we contract with a, say, defensive tactics. There's a company up in Kansas City that we can contract to come down and they, they set up the website and everything that when people in surrounding jurisdictions come to train, they have to pay an enrollment fee or a fee for that. I'm not going to say it's not possible that, that there could be a usage fee added on to that to help support that. I'm not going to say it's not possible. We just have to come up with, when we, when we host training, to make that possible.
I'd kind of like to see some availability to have some income producing to cover those miscellaneous expenses that you're going to have with this, not just buying water, but I'm talking about the building itself and, and so forth. That was one of the things I would like to see you look at for that. And I've got one other comment I'll make later on and proposals that, that I'll give you a preview of that now, is the opportunity to be able to host maybe one time a month or sometime individuals, citizens to come out there under your supervision and, and shoot. I don't know whether that's possible or not, but.
We, we've listened to talks, especially when we, when we started down this avenue with Hunter Safety, opening it up and with our insurance. So that becomes a problem. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it would be something that we would definitely have to go into talks with fee and figure out if, if that's even going to be allowed.
Maybe the insurance wouldn't even allow that.
Okay.
Thought of something, but I can't remember what I thought of right now, so.
Will we come back to Commissioner Weitzel?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in, in favor of more training. I think one of the common things you probably hear is, you know, to be a, to be a hairdresser, you got to have two years of training and to be, I mean, how long to be on the street to be a police officer? And so, you know, definitely, I'm with the guys, the job you guys do, I'm definitely in favor of more training. So do you, and do you envision this as like a destination where other law enforcement area, people around the area will want to come or like, are there other facilities around here that?
There actually aren't, other than, other than the actual academy. But again, until they expand in some manner, they can't host everybody that would like to descend on it and utilize it. I know like Harvey County, Pratt County, we all work together. We, in this last SWAT school that we hosted, co-host with Harvey County, we even have some Wichita officers that come over. I definitely see that it would be a hub for people to come and attend training and that's what we'd like to see and develop it into.
And when we go to these other places, is there, like, is there, do we pay the, the county that's hosting it or the city that's hosting it or?
No.
Okay.
So, so like this, this year, well, I'm sorry, last year, we, we did, we co-hosted the SWAT school in Harvey County. So we usually, like, when we have it here, we'll go to the armory. They let us use the army to house everybody that's attending the school, so it doesn't cost anything on lodging. You know, meals are on them, but we usually take up a collection and they usually grill or barbecue or something in the evenings. So, but no, it's just something that we do for the region because when things go south in the region, we're going to be reaching out and we're going to be asking and we need people trained.
And then staff. So what, what, what do you, like, do you envision some of your people being permanently out there or?
No, that would, that would have to, that would create more positions. Right now with everything that the sheriff's office does among the scope of the judicial system, we don't, we don't have the personnel to just assign out there or something. It'd be, it'd be a good deal. I think a lot of good things would happen with that, but I don't think that's possible.
Okay. And then the last question, it's kind of along the same vein as a lot of other questions you've gotten, but, so like concealed carry classes, do you envision that as something where that could be taught for people to get the concealed carry in the county or?
Again, like, like Commissioner Hurst had mentioned, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule it out, but we'd have to talk to our insurance company to make sure that that would be in line with what our agreement with them would pay for. Because we definitely have the, we have the experience, we have the expertise and we have the instructors. So, I mean, it, you know, it'd be, it'd be a positive thing, be a way to, to, you know, get the community involved and get out in the community.
And like even, I was thinking like private instructors being able to, to use it.
Right. And in that line, so we do have a concealed carry office where people come in and they do concealed carry. Those fundings that they pay for can only be spent for the concealed carry piece by legislature, so that would be something that, you know, we'd be able to support in that aspect as well.
Good, okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Just to kind of get the ball rolling here, where do you think the budget will get to? Like, I know you're working, working downward, I guess I'll want 1.5 million.
So I, I will tell you where I hope to be was under one. That, that's where I don't, I, that's where I would like to be.
Okay, let's just call it one. Is one, you know, is the commission in favor? And generally speaking, we're not making decisions today, but I think we need to test the waters here. If everybody's like, I'm not even in for half a million, then he needs to know. So, and then Randy, you're, you're looking at financing as a way to?
I'll, yeah, into financing options that have as little impact on the budget as possible, which I think we can do and I'll look at federal money, but having kind of that ballpark, again, you don't make decisions, like you said, but having that ballpark, if it's 1 million, 1.5, and I think the sheriff's office has mentioned that this is just a preliminary estimate. There's still to be changes and it hasn't gone out to bid, of course, so it could come in under that amount.
So the question, just testing the waters here, if Randy came back to us with a financing package for a million dollar facility, would you entertain a conversation of?
I would, I would want, I would like to see our senators, representatives at the fed level be contacted and a push made in that direction. Two things hit me here. My chicken scratches at 75,000 a year, no interest comes to 20 years. So if you got down to your million dollars, you would probably be setting somewhere in that 15-year range you were originally. The other point that hasn't been brought up here, and when we were at our meetings, introductory meetings here four weeks ago, one of the biggest things that came out in that was your sheriff's department and how well-trained they are to avoid the liability issues. And we had just had our department meetings with you and you gave us a few incidents where it looked like you guys were on top of things. So with that in mind, part of that's training and how to handle things coming in. The reality is we could get lucky and save way more than that liabilities in one year should it happen, but we got insurance for that. We don't have insurance to build a building. But my point is, the training would be good and yes, I would, especially if they're figuring out ways to not add to the overall cost to the county. I mean, you've been working towards getting a large portion of it, even if we can't get to the full portion your way. It wouldn't require in the scope of what's being spent in this county, a whole lot more money to get where we need to be, especially if you work that, or works out like you hope. So, yeah, I'd be willing to listen and work toward that.
I'm definitely on board. I think you probably know that. Part of the questions I had beyond borrowing the money, I'd like to see it be shorter term now if it's possible, but if we initiated this project, went forward with it, I, I assume there's probably a much better chance of getting some money, knowing we're in process and trying to actually do that project. If you're looking at it as an emergency need, which you spoke of earlier, if we're in the midst of doing it, knowing our old facility, you'll continue to train out of the old facility, I assume, until it's done. I mean, I like the fact you trimmed stuff out there, Darren, but I think in the end scope, you'd need it all. Someday we could add on, but if we could have a building, the, the actual shooting areas and then the berm, that, that would allow you to get started doing some really good work out there, I think.
I, I do think if we could set up a meeting with our senators and present it to them and see what, what their timeframe would be and what the likelihood like that. and see what, what their timeframe would be and what the likelihood, like that, that would be a good next step, I think. Have we talked to the Law Enforcement Training Center about being a part of this in any way, like funding part of it, or...
So they actually, they have their own project, they're trying to have, go in, they have their own legislature that they're trying to get funding for. So I don't, I don't think that they would be interested in coming all this way north, because they're trying to develop their own project there. They're trying to like double or triple their size of their campus right now, so they're trying to gain guns, gain funds from the state to help facilitate their, their project that they're wanting.
None of it could be potentially saved in duplication if they were, you know, work with us in your range?
I haven't brought that up. I, I don't think that they're expanding their range, but they're, they're trying to host, I believe, all three disciplines out there. It's not just a law enforcement training facility, they wanted to bring EMS and fire, from what I understand, which is going to triple the size of their campus, instructors and footprint, and it's just...
Would it hurt to ask, like, hey...
No, I, I could get ahold of Director Darren Beck and see.
I think it would.
You always ask.
Yeah.
I told him we needed to have lunch at the last conference anyway, so they don't think that's a priority next week.
Well, it seems like there's good consensus here to, for Randy, you to continue to work with the sheriff on, on a refined budget, potential financing options. I think it sounds like there's great interest in finding grant funding, if we can find it. That might speed the process up. I don't know how long that takes to get that, but, does this give you enough to...
Yeah, this gives me enough to at least know that there's interest, and we're going to try to move forward on it, so I'll work on the financing portion, and with the Sheriff's Office and Hyneman.
I'd be happy to be a part of a meeting if we want to, you know, next time the Senator Bran or Marshall are here, or any one of us, I'm sure would be happy to participate and advocate for that.
I think also with that idea in mind, might talk with their representatives here, their people that represent them here locally, or semi-locally.
Yeah.
To get them talked to first, visited with first about this, and try to go from there with setting up that. And I would encourage, look at all revenue-producing sources.
Yeah.
Just provide everything for everybody.
I think, love to see kind of a report back on who we've talked to and what the interest is from other parties, legislative especially, and then maybe we can put it back on the agenda in a month or two. Is that a reasonable timeframe for you?
No, that, that sounds great. I, I don't know, in their legislative sessions, if they're, it's a pretty busy time of year, aren't they?
The state is, but the federal government, we may be able to at least get staff.
Even if there's some indication on interest, then that might help decision-making.
And I had a, I had a question, and I was, I was thinking this before you said something, but like all these agencies that were, or other departments that were processing, you know, like, I think we did something with the City of Hutch, with the Law Enforcement Center and things like that, you know, and just talking to some of them and saying, hey, this, this is the idea we've got, would you be willing to be, you know, take this back to your county or your city and see if there's any funding there, and then maybe some sort of priority access, or, you know, guarantee them so much access to it for their own people or something like that? I mean, it's just an idea, I, I don't even know if it's legal, but...
Sure. And, and like I said, a lot, a lot of those agencies that come and that we train with that come to us or Harvey County or whatever, it's because they don't have the resources for them.
And that is one thing, we wouldn't be in competition somewhat with Salina in some ways, wouldn't we, with theirs, or not? They're not part of this 19-county.
No. They're, they're in a different region, but, you know, I, I know the sheriff down there, Roger's a good guy. From what I understand, they put like several million dollars into a gun range, so...
Well, no, and I was, I was just thinking from the, from the standpoint of, you know, hey, you know, if we want this and this and this, our kind of business is cheap. And so, you know, if we can figure out some other ways to get some money, then...
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely pursue some other avenues and see where we can get some funding at. And see, you know, if these grants open up, if they're eligible to, to actually apply for, definitely.
Commissioner Boecker?
I know from past experience on the EMS board and working with several different EMS people in this county and across, we developed our own training deal like you're wanting to do, and it saved us a tremendous amount of money. And it is a workable scenario to save money. So, I've seen it work. You're probably headed in the right direction. And a lot of times, there was a fee involved, because it was so much cheaper for these other entities to come to our facility, simply because we had the man that could teach it, had the credentials to teach it. So I see what you're working at, and it's doable.
And a lot of times when we host a training, if we get so many seats, they need to give us a pre-seat, so that would save money. Like I said, if we added a usage fee or something that could help facilitate the cost of the facility, probably would hurt.
Thank you, Sheriff. It sounds like the action item for you is if you can go back and, you know, we're willing to help as well, seek some, some supportive funding from the beds or whoever, and then report back, and as soon as you have something to report back, we'll get you back on the agenda.
Sure.
Does that sound fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you for your time and your support. Go Chiefs.
Yeah, that's right. The next item on the agenda is the sewer district projects. Don, are you...
So, the reason this is on the study session is, I kind of put it in, you guys probably saw the memo that was in the packet that went out, but it's Reno County oversees water and sewer, certain water and sewer districts in, in the county, and Public Works is in charge of that. So Don is in charge of those employees and those districts, running them. The governing body, you are the governing body of each individual district. I believe in 2019, it was, it may have even began before then, there were some plans developed for Habit, which is the Hutchinson Air Base Industrial Track, where the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center is, and Yoder. They're about, they're lagoon, they're on lagoon systems, they're about a mile apart. The, when looking at it, there's both systems, both districts needed some repairs, renovations. Habit's was, and Don can correct me, I think part of it was the lines, the interior lines, their infrastructure, not the, they have lagoon capacity, but they may still have some lagoon upgrades needed, where Yoder is overcapacity. They need more lagoons, we don't have land there. We would have land over, inhabit, they're a mile apart, to connect the two sewer districts, but as Sheriff Campbell just mentioned, with Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center looking to double, triple in size possibly, if they get the funding, that will bring our consumption, the consumption there above what the current lagoon system can do. So, that kind of...
Don Grant, Director of Public Works. Yes, what Randy just said, that's 2019. So back then, the Yoder sewer district was not large enough for what Yoder had grown to. You know, Yoder has a restaurant, it has a locker and all that, and so we was a emergency discharging, getting permission from KDHE to emergency discharge in a non-discharging system. So Yoder already outgrown itself in 2019. At the time, Habit, it, its sales was plenty big enough for Habit, and, but it had infrastructure problems that was built in 1945, all that infrastructure was, and the repairs in 2019 was going to be a million dollars just for that. Since then, the law enforcement centers grow so much that now, presently, we're having to discharge, immerse, or discharge when we really shouldn't have to, so we've already outgrown it as of now. Back in 2019, before, we thought, we thought at the time that Habit was plenty big enough and the ponds was large enough for both Yoder and Habit. Now that is not true. And so we was going to combine them. It was going to cost a little bit more, combine them, but it was going to save in the long run, because it's much easier to take care of four ponds, one system than it is two separate systems. So now we've come down to, so back in 2019, the estimated cost just to rehab Yoder by itself was a million dollars. And Habit was 1.4 million dollars, and 1 million of that being just for the lines itself. And then to join it was going to be 3 million dollars, that was in 2019. Back in, and now, it's come to the conclusion that if we join them, which I think is what we, what is a good option, is now we have to purchase approximately 26, 27 more acres of land to build more ponds to provide for the law enforcement center and Yoder. We, we did this study in 2019 and got these estimates, and then it just kind of set until Randy and I come aboard for about a year. And then after that, it was brought to my attention that maybe we'd see about the city taking on. And this was Commissioner Friesen suggested this. So back a year ago, I checked on that, and it, with the management at that time, not the city council, but the management kind of killed that project. So it wasn't discussed after that. So then I thought we'd go back to the purchasing land and getting the sales built at Habit. So I got ahold of a company that owned some land down there, and they're willing to sell, pretty expensive, but I haven't negotiated that. But since then, the city got new management and stuff like that, so I was asked to go that direction again. So I, I've met with the city, and, and it was all unofficial, so I'm not going to go into details on that. But the, the city is more, the city now, and the city council wants to be partners with Reno County, but it's kind of a split decision on the sewer thing, whether they want to take it on or not, which is, I understand, because they don't know what the growth is going to be, they don't know what they're going to have to take on in the future, and they don't know what that, what that influence is going to be, that they're going to have to take on, depending on what, you know, businesses are built down there. So that's, so what I need from this commission is a direction, because even if we take it to the city, then I need to have that engineered, I need to give the city, see what it's going to cost. They say to come up with the cost, they'd have to approximately spend $20,000 to see what that would be, and it just prolongs and prolongs. Or else, am I going to join these sewer districts, buy some land, build some cells, and get this done? So KDHE's been on us pretty hard. They sent us a letter and gave us 30 days to come up with a solution. I contacted them personally, wrote them a letter, and got that delayed. So we, we, I need a direction from you, what to do.
What is, let's put cost off the table for a moment, and just, what is the time it will take if we said, we will approve you to get a study to compare the costs and benefits of having your own lagoon system and connecting versus connecting to the city's wastewater treatment plant? How long would it take for that to be studied and brought back to us?
Well, it's a little difficult to answer that totally, because I don't know how long it's going to take for the city or anybody to get back with me on what that is.
Well, what, what I'm suggesting is, you got this chicken or the egg situation, and we take, we take the risk of potentially paying for the study and bringing that to the City of Hutch, so they could see, okay, it's going to be this much more impact to our wastewater treatment facility, and we just deliver the results to them, so then they know, and then they can make a decision.
I don't think it's going to take long for me to determine, I mean, it's going to cost money, what it's going to cost to put the infrastructure in and run it to the city, not counting what the city's going to charge. I don't think it's going to take long to determine it'll cost money, what it's going to cost to build this infrastructure, to put these two sewer districts together at Habit. I can do those two separate things. It's going to be very expensive. The time, it'll probably be three, four, five months. But, but, but then, now we've done that study, and I don't know if it's feasible, I don't know if we can afford to send it to, I don't know if we can afford what they're going to charge. And plus, just for information, I'm not for or against it, but if we'd send it to the city, we're saddled with that, and we're saddled with whatever they want to charge us in the future, which there will be increases. And, and so, and we do away with the infrastructure that we have now, and if that deal ever fell apart, we would never be able to afford to start over.
Well, I think a lot of that is, you know, based on good contracts, and we haven't always had the best track record on that, but we can do better. I just, I'm bothered by the fact that, I mean, I don't know if you guys know where the city wastewater treatment plant, but it's between Yoder and City of Hutch. It's about as close as you can get to our, you know, sewer systems now, and so, do you have, do you have an estimate of the cost associated with an engineering study that we could just say, okay, we know there's two primary solutions here. One's kind of a combo rework of the systems we have today. The other is connecting into the city's wastewater treatment plant. Compare the two, tell us what the costs and benefits are. Like, do you have an idea of what that would cost?
No, I think, I think joining the sewer system down Habit is going to push 4 million now.
I'm saying the study.
Oh, the study.
If they would say, okay, we're going to, we're going to study both options, give you cost estimates for both, because there's, there's this trade-offs, right? Like, you need to buy another 20-plus acres on one side. Over here, you got to run a line five miles north or whatever to connect. And, and so, you know, there's cost and benefits on both sides. What would the cost of the study, to tell us those costs and benefits be?
I'll get that. The only study that they'll be able to give us though is getting the sewage up to Hutcherson. What it's going to actually cost to customers, I will not know. That will come from the city.
Could you give us a, sorry, I'm almost done. I'm trying to like reel out as much information for you guys as I can. What, can you give us a, a rough estimate of, like, what the engineering costs would be? Like, if we could give you a budget, like approval budget today, so we could let you get going? Is it 50,000, 250,000? What do you think?
You're asking me to guess, and I don't really guess very often.
It's okay to guess. Sorry, it's recorded.
As a side note, though, this would have to be paid for by the districts, and they don't have, they're very limited money.
Well, stop throwing roadblocks in here, I just want to number them first.
Less than 20.
Okay. Like, okay, so, like, I'd approve 50 just to get this thing off the center myself, but...
But Commissioner Friesen, we don't have $50,000.
Well, we can, can't we take it out of general fund?
Well, you really should, I mean, no, because it's, I mean, that's tax-free money from accounting, wide tax-free, when you go out and...
But the problem is, is there's no money there, and you can't get money until you do a study. Like, can we loan it to the fund? Either that, or it's like, there's no money, we can't do anything. Which one is it?
It's the, it's the first one. We, I mean, we're limited on what we can do. I mean, you have to pass that, even if you loan the money, you're going to pass that back to the district, to those, to those, it has to end up being paid for by the people in those districts, and I don't want...
I'm just looking for speed. Like, can we make a decision? We have the cash, we can assess it back to the districts, so he can figure out a solution.
I don't know how we can do it, because they're on cash basis too, like everybody else, and we can't just obligate them to...
Essentially, you've come here, we have no money to make any decisions today, so we have to raise the rates, and you come back when we have money?
Yeah.
And the government isn't letting, isn't giving us time. We've hit the end of our rope with the government, if I understand your idea, Don. You've got to, you've got them to post, give us an extra few fees or... You've got a, you've got them to post, give us an extra few feet of rope, is what you've got to do. But this is coming to a head.
How do you make it, how do we do anything if we have no money in the budget?
I mean, this is kind of, I haven't discussed this with Don, but I'm assuming there's, they're gonna get rate increases in those districts.
Well, we have.
We already have, so that's.
And that's gonna be the end.
I know, but there's no money there, so we can't, we can't approve anything. Is that what you're saying?
Unless the engineers would cover the cost and bill us when the project's in place. And I don't know what the county practices, if we can even do that.
I'm not, Daniel and I pretty much disagree on this, in the fact that a lagoon system is overall, in the long term, is gonna be considerably cheaper, and we don't have to depend upon somebody else telling us how much they're gonna charge. Most of the money is gonna go into, give me a minute. Most of the money is gonna go into the main infrastructure of Habit. And I, we're in a problem. And we don't need to wait six months, eight months, nine months, a year to solve this problem. I'm not sure they're gonna give us that much time, been lucky so far. And I think when you depend, start depending upon somebody else, when you can depend upon yourself to do things, and most of the money's gonna go for infrastructure, or a lot of it, third of it maybe, is gonna go for infrastructure anyway. And I just, I think this is, even though we gotta buy some land, it may be a little high, maybe a little low compared to some other places. So I think it's time to get with the program and, and look at going forward, and we can't make decisions right now anyway, but I think it's time to send a direction that we need to go the lagoon route and take care of it.
Okay, but number one, we're taking good ag ground, and we're gonna put crap on it for the rest of its existence. Like, I don't really like that.
It's development ground.
Well, and the reason things cost a lot in government is sometimes people don't work together. And we have a partner over there, I, I think worrying about them not being a partner in the future is, is a bit short-sighted.
They'll be a partner, it'll be a matter of money.
And it's, the, the, okay, so we, we got multiple things going on here. Like, we need to settle the issue of, there's no cash in there, we can't do anything. Can you figure out whether there's a way to borrow cash from a fund, or?
I really wanna, I really, this is gonna be a topic that comes up a lot in a lot of different things, I think, and I really wanna set the tone well with new commissioners, because what's happened in the past on all, is that Reno County has been tasked with administering all these different districts, and then over time, has, the people in the past, not people in this room, have chosen to not adequately assess fees to those different districts, because the county itself can just bail them out. And, and that has happened a lot in the past, and we really, we really need to get things back on track. An effort needs to be made on that. Whether or not we can, so I don't, we maybe can find solutions in the very short term, but I think Don and Randy and I have all had conversations, I think the goal is to get out of that habit, at least to get out of that broken system, because it's really just kind of revolved, and it's gonna keep, if it keep, if we keep doing that, it's never gonna get any better.
I get, I get it, but can we find the funds to pay for an engineering study?
Question?
One second, I just wanna make sure he's.
Well, I don't, I don't know what any of the balances are.
I wouldn't think county money, but there's always ARPA money. If you wanna take one of the things you've already handed off to the county and reduce that amount.
I'm really surprised you can't do a transfer out of capital funds into a, another capital fund.
Well, I mean, just, but you gotta remember, I mean, you're, when you're taking those capital funds, that's county-wide taxpayers have put money into those capital funds, and now you're taking them from the county-wide taxpayers to a special, to a smaller district.
That is all the time, I mean, pick a road. Like, there's a road over here, a road over there.
Yeah, and, and the difference being, though, eventually those roads come back to my road. You know, I'm a taxpayer here, I'm gonna pay for the south roads, but someday I'm gonna get the north roads. Money that goes into the Yoder Water District never comes back out of the Yoder Water District.
Do you understand, like, we need a solution, like, the, what I hear you saying is, is that we can't do anything until the rates are raised and the funds are acquired through that, that process to do anything. Like, there's no sense in having a conversation about building here, building there, if there's no money. That's step one.
That'd be the money for, if you want a comparison. We've already talked with Schwab, I mean, some preliminary designs of the lagoon system. But if there was a true cost comparison, and that took extra engineering, say, that's the part, I think, here, today, we're saying, we don't know where the money would come from.
I can't believe you can't figure that out.
Well, the essential deal here is, we're not only doing this for today, we're doing it for the future. The proverbial stuff flows downhill. Are we pumping it back to Hutchison's deal and putting a lot of equipment that's gonna wear out, and we're gonna have to upkeep forever? Or are we running it downhill? And it gets where we want it in a lagoon system? That's another issue, the ongoing costs that go with it. The other thing is, how in the world did we ever get saddled with it in the first place? Everywhere I've been, there's a local water district. I've got family that, that's the president of some of them. When something like this happens, it never enters the county. They sit there, and they've gotta come up with the money for this big plant that's gonna go in there, so they can, they can provide the water. They've gotta figure out where they're gonna get the water. It's not a county issue, it's a local issue. How in the world did we ever get it dumped on us?
When a water district or sewer district within the county that's not within a town or city fails, and that community cannot repair it or make it right, it's the county, it's turned over to the county, and you become those districts. KDHE will not allow the citizens to have a failed system, and the county will fix it. And we got saddled, and that's why we're saddled. We have four sewer districts and two water districts.
So, so by default, we've inherited them?
Yes, except for the Highlands. Before, that was a city, that was another, yeah, county system, and now the city is still county, but it's a different subject. But that answers your questions. If, if a water or sewer district within this county that's not within a town fails, the county will take it over. Has to take it over, forced to.
And the reason we got a water district there is because our military created a problem and ruined a bunch of the water in the area.
Not the sewer district, we don't have the water district down there yet.
Okay, so they, that's still operational on their part.
Yeah, I got, they want me to have a meeting with them this month, so I don't know, I don't know what they're gonna ask of me.
Mr. Parks has been.
No, you're fine.
Waiting patiently.
That's okay. Go ahead.
Well, one of the questions, yeah, retrieved some from ARPA funds, you know how I feel about that. But secondly, we spoke about some money that Representative Murphy threw a paper out my way several months ago. Last year, there was an allocation issue, there's another 50,000 allocation. What is that earmarked for?
General county expenses, kind of revenue loss replacement. So that's the.
Is that something in line with if we could get this study rolling, that we could use that money to use for that?
That goes to the argument that's in the county general fund, not a different fund.
Okay, so it does get deposited there, but, but it's a state allocation, correct?
It's from the federal through state.
Can you loan ARPA funds?
I, I believe we could, I think that there's flexibility to loan ARPA funds.
Loan the funds, raise the rates, pay it back. I still don't believe we can't solve this internally.
Well, I'll be the whipping boy. We're on camera. But you know, we voted to put a whole bunch of funds out here an hour ago. Those same entities, if I study right, and you correct me if I'm wrong, are getting a yearly, and that's partially under contract, and council's told us we can't drag them back. But in our general budget, those are, those companies are, those entities are getting line item funding. Now, they're not, we're not forced to give them that funding. It's been happening for years, if I read things right. We could adjust that funding and use that funding to turn around and use anywhere in the budget we want. Now, I know the idea was, aren't we giving so much to, you know, faith housing every year in our regular budget?
No, I don't think we give anything to interface, other than the ARPA money.
What, what about the?
Randy, can you pull up the allocation on the ARPA fund?
Well, can I interject something here? My concern is, there's other areas identified in the county that have problems. Are we gonna end up owning them? One of my concerns, I have a, somebody that continues to come to, it's not my district, but it's somebody, they have no pot of water. I mean, is that something we're going to inherit, 'cause they can't afford to fix that?
Well, that's a town. So I would say no.
That's a city, yeah.
But we had another water district out here west that.
But I know there's several water and sewer problems.
Put on us a couple of years ago, and I said no and got my way, or else we'd have another, we don't need anymore. We don't need ones we have.
Mr. White?
Between an unincorporated area and an incorporated city.
I get that, but I just wondered if there's any other identified areas out there that we could be saddled with before we go, well, it's.
Yeah, Habit water.
Mr. White?
So this, this sewer district affects around 100 people, did I read that right, or am I?
I think there's, between Yoder and Habit, I think there's like 122 connections. Now, you have to realize that six of those connections is the law enforcement center that has approximately 300 people in it now, that plan within five years is gonna go to 600 people. And so that's blowing everything out of proportion on the, on the sewer, and, and so that's created another evil.
Yeah, and do, do fees and stuff have to be, like, could we make it a condition of the law enforcement center that they pay for the upgrades for the extra capacity?
Well, they've offered to see if they could help in some way, but they're gonna pay for it when they start getting their new rates. And, and in the future, their sewer rate's gonna be based on their water usage, which is the only way to be right about it. And I have access to their water usage, and they've even given it to me. We haven't went there yet. We went ahead and raised everybody's rates just to get started on it, and hope that that kinda covers a lot of it, but we don't know until what all this is gonna cost. But, yeah, they're gonna be a big part paying for this, 'cause they're the main user.
Right, and.
Fees, and that's gonna take a while.
Right, and I, I don't even know if this is an option, but what about incentives for homeowners to switch to septic? I mean, would that leave any of the problem at all, or?
I think that's a possibility down there.
It might just reduce your rate base and make it worse.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I was thinking was, you know, if the, you know, if it's over capacity, then, you know, that might eliminate some of the need, but I don't know.
It's gonna cost, just like, the residents, I don't know what the cost would be, but it's gonna be more than what they'll probably pay in the 20, 30 years for this project.
They probably don't have enough land to put a septic system on. There's not very many residents down at Habit, it's mainly businesses.
Yeah, well, and, and I think the, the question with the municipality is, is real, because I don't know if any of you guys watched the, oh, I think it was about a month ago, when, or maybe two months ago, when the, when the water, when the water department came to the city council and said, "Hey, our rates are really low, why don't we raise them by 25% over the next five years?" And so I think there's an appetite in the, in the water department in the city to raise people's rates, and I don't see why it would be any different with something like this.
But, but, I mean, I spent a lot of time on, on city council, like, all of those rate centers, they're just at cost. They're not, there's no profit, they don't generally funnel, so if they're asking for a rate increase, it's 'cause they're expecting costs in the future. I mean, I know the city of Hutchison in particular is looking for more water rates, and that's probably what's driving those up. It's, you can't just turn the dial and, and skim funds and, and put it in the general fund. It's just not, it's not allowed.
Right, right. And I understand that, but I mean, just like, the way they presented it is, you know, it seemed, I, I didn't like the way it was presented, you know, hey, our rates are low, and.
Well, I, I might propose to get things moving here. I, I think there's, there's two ways to do this, like, there's two directions. Like, you can see Commissioner Hurst and I are on opposite ends of the spectrum on this issue, so the rest of you need to decide. Are you gonna need an engineering study either way? Okay, so I would propose, I'm gonna make a motion just to keep this thing moving.
We can't do that, we're just in a work-study session.
You guys can have, like, informal votes of consensus, but it's not binding.
All right, all right. I would, I would propose that informally, that we draft something to, we can allocate, we have administrative expenses of 137,000 there at the bottom. That looks like something we could borrow from out of ARPA and, and put into this effort. Don needs an engineering study to make a decision. So the decision here for me is, do we, A, instruct Don to go get an engineering study to connect the lagoons, or B, that's the Hurst proposal, B, the Friesen proposal, is to request an engineering study to compare the costs and rates associated with a lagoon versus connecting to the city wastewater. Like, so we need some money, where are we gonna find it, and which engineering study are we gonna do?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, when we get to answer this, to have it engineered on what it's gonna cost to bring it up to the city of Hutchison, do you want me to ask the city of Hutchison to go forward and have it engineered, or whatever it is they need to do to determine what they're gonna charge us?
I, I would suggest that we could offer as part of our study to involve them and, and help them determine our impact on their rates. They may have a totally different rate study for all of their costs, but they should have a base cost and then our impact.
Wouldn't it make sense just to, if we're gonna, if that, there's enough consensus to go that direction, we just do our own engineer, have that comparison before getting too far with the city, to see if the commission at that point at a business meeting wants to.
You're gonna have Don come back here and say, "I don't know what the city's gonna do," and then we're all gonna be like, well, we, how are we gonna make a decision?
Do we have to pay for two whole new, under this plan, two whole new engineering studies? I thought we already had paid for one with regard to Schwab.
We have an engineering study on the, on putting in the lagoon sewer system, either by rehabbing Yoder, rehabbing just Habit, or putting them together. So we have preliminary, we have all that preliminary design, it's just changed over the time, so it's not gonna be full-blown, new, new start from the beginning there.
You're gonna put current numbers in it.
Current numbers, and, and now the, the number of sales is not, is growing, gotta buy land and stuff like that, so it's all changed in the past three or four years because of the law enforcement center.
My, my argument is just, you know, Commissioner Bogdan, you said, well, you know, rolls downhill, whatever, like, but you don't know, like, you don't know, nobody knows, we're not engineers, we don't know what.
That's what I'm getting at.
Like, what's gonna, gonna cost more? Like, the operational costs associated with, I mean, it should go downhill to the river and then need to go back uphill, I think. But, like, until we study that, and we're not gonna be able to, we're just guessing. None of us are qualified to guess.
Gonna have to have some lift stations.
You're not an engineer.
No.
No, I can tell you, we're gonna have to have lift systems, it's all about the city enough.
A lot.
Well, I'm just saying...
Borrow from administrative expenses, how are you gonna pay that back? That's already...
Well, most of the money's been allocated, it's no longer, no longer ARPA, and I don't know.
Right, I mean...
I would say pull it out of the health department and emergency management, because that's a longer-term project. The audit, audits and administrative work, we're paying I parametrics, and we'll pay audits.
How about the instruction is, you come back, find the money for the study, we need to decide today which study Don should be thinking about.
What do you recommend, Don?
Well...
After all this?
My thought, too.
Yeah, it's good work.
Yeah, well, I will just say this. I know if you build sewer ponds and stuff like that, sooner or later, it's gonna be paid for. And then the maintenance of it, it's not that much. If you run it to city, you'll pay for that, but then it's never paid for, because you'll continually always pay the city to take care of it. So, there's never no law to where maybe you can start saving, because you're not making a payment. Now, that may be right or wrong, but you asked me the question. I understand, I understand exactly what, what Commissioner Friesen, Commissioner Friesen's saying, too, but that's my input on it.
Do you think you could, by next meeting, come back and say, like, generally, here's the engineering costs to just do the lagoons, here's an engineering cost to compare the two, maybe give us a better number?
Again, yes, but there's a part of that, too. I have to get with the landowners and see what, how much land I can, what I need to buy from the engineers, how much that land's gonna cost from this company that's overseeing the land. I have to know what your taste is and what I can, well, to buy, too.
I'm sorry, like, just the cost for the study, and then I would expect the study to kinda research the costs for the land.
Okay.
Could you come back with the study costs of the two?
Of both of them?
Yeah. And then, what I would suggest is, you know, we can all think about it, staff's gonna come back, well, here's how we're gonna fund the interim, Don's gonna come back with, here's the two costs for the two different studies, approximately how long that's gonna take, and then we can set them off, and then they're gonna come back and tell us what it's actually gonna cost.
And then, when you get the price of those two studies, then we're gonna need to know what's gonna, the city's gonna charge us. I don't know when that comes into play. Because that's, 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 that's the big cost. It's not running it up here, it's the cost of forever on taking it on, so that, that's a cost that we have to figure out whether or not the people can afford.
What if you went to the city this week and said, hey, you know, we're contemplating an engineering study, would you join us in that study, so we know what your rate's gonna be?
Yeah, the only thing I've got from the city on that is, to study that would cost approximately 20,000, and they wouldn't wanna do that on their own. And there's half the city council on board, and half not on board, and one undecided, but they're all willing to work with us. That's unofficially what I can say right now. So, it's not a real clear path on even being accepted.
I like things paid for.
It's not, you're just paying an operational cost either way, you've got operational costs either way. That's, that's the sewer cost that you're gonna get from the city. It's the cost to run that plant, we have a cost to run the lagoons. It's just you don't see it, right? Because it's just in the budget, and we just pay for it.
And I know when we built a mechanical plant in South Hutchison, we had to raise rates, not 25% at the time, but we had to raise rates a certain percent every other year, just to pay the PNI as well as maintenance. And when you look at that versus the maintenance on a lagoon system, because they're both, either way you go, they're gonna have to have lift stations, regardless, you're just common sense.
I just, I would like a professional engineer to tell me, not one of the commissioners, like, no offense to any one of you, but you did not have the engineering experience...
Actually, I have some expertise in some of those areas, but I won't speak up about it. But I know he does, and I trust his opinion, he has some engineering on staff, and so that's my, if we're gonna spend $20,000 a study, or $50,000 for the whole thing, the other half of that can go a long ways toward property as well, and I think maintaining your own is probably an advantage, for sure. My heart leans that way as well, I, I think, but I will go along with what you folks wanna study.
Well, what I would propose, can you get this done by next agenda?
That's next week, so that'd be hard, the agenda's already kinda set.
My engineering firm I use, like, I don't think they're just gonna stop everything and get this done.
Sorry, the quote associated with the two options to study it, the quote to study.
Oh, yeah, the price they wanna charge to, oh, yeah, I can get that, I can get that tomorrow, probably.
Okay. Well, let's bring it back to the next available agenda, and then we'll give you a decision. I mean, this is a good conversation, I think, does everybody have enough to think about? So, and then you'll bring us back how to pay for it in the interim?
If you guys choose to move forward with that, yeah, I'll figure out how to use ARPA money.
Get a consensus, see where we're headed.
Today?
We had a consensus on where we were headed on some of these other items. Just a thought.
I don't, I don't care, like, you wanna draw, all in favor of Hurst?
No, the motion, just forget it, just forget it. You're not gonna be satisfied till we get this thing done.
No, like, I'm, I'm driving, like, this is a complicated process, and I appreciate everybody, you know, like, I think we got through a lot, like, that could've taken three hours, we got through it 30 minutes, like, and I don't have a problem, like, it's very simple. Do we, but I think we wanna wait to see if, I think Commissioner Parks indicated, like, his decision may be different if the two studies are substantially different in cost, right? If, if the studies are similar.
I think long range, it's just my feeling, Commissioner Friesen is that the long range of the cost related with the city is always gonna be more for the residents and probably for us.
Putting in the, joining the two sewer districts and putting in the sewer ponds, it's gonna be much more money than running, putting in the pumps and running the line to the city. But then you got the cost of the city, which, so you can't, you can't just say, is it gonna be cheaper to run the line to the city or build the ponds? Running the line to the city's gonna be cheaper, but then that's not the end of the bill. And building the ponds, that's the end of the bill.
I understand, but the study should give you the operational costs long-term, too, and should, I mean, we should be able to talk to the city about, you know, what, like, you're saddling the public, the Reno County Public Works Department with a lagoon system for a few hundred people. There isn't a long-term operational cost that we need to consider compared to whether the city of Hutch is gonna raise the rates on those couple hundred people over time, like...
I don't even know what the initial...
That's a, that's a conversation where I just like to, like, what is the difference? We're just speculating on the operational costs, and that's why I think if a study told us what those were, I'd feel more comfortable.
I'll see if the city wants to go forward with this. The last response I got was they dropped the subject, but that doesn't mean they dropped it forever, but just in their preliminary discussion between the city manager and them, that's kinda where it went unofficially.
Okay, and of course, there's a new, continue to see, there are people in the city council now, too, so...
I had this discussion last week, so...
Well, we know we're not getting into an agenda in the next little while, anyway, so to do some discovery work probably wouldn't be a bad thing to find out what we can have for solid information. But I look at things for the community out there 10, 20 years from now. What's your feelings on production for cost to them? By then, project's gonna be behind us, is it gonna be more advantageous for them to have, I just want that input, if you can give me it, be more advantageous for have the ponds out there, or to tap into the city for, for those that are paying the end of that eventually?
Well, these ponds out here, they don't have liners or nothing in them, so, so, you know, maintaining those, of course, you're gonna be maintaining the pumps, and you're gonna maintain the infrastructure, get it to the ponds, and then the ponds, they do their own work. We mow around them and stuff like that, take samples, but they do their own work. So, so after they're paid for, then the expense is much, much less, and then, you know, then those fees, instead of paying for something, you're billing up, so that when you do have to do something to the ponds, but, you know, sewer ponds should last, you know, decades and decades before you have to do anything to them, unless you outgrow them in this case.
So, you're leaning Hurst? He wants a strong poll.
At the end of it, I want to have residents and businesses out there to have the greatest advantage for them, and still be able to share the cost and expenses that they're going to have to in the end result. What if we look at developing more out there? What if it's a hardship totally on them where they don't wanna be there anymore? Then we lose that. I mean, I, my brain looks that way. I want, I think we're being responsible if we look out for whatever it is, the business or citizens of the county, to give them what's in their best interest in the end as well. I mean, if, and I ain't saying I'm leaning Hurst or Friesen, this is not Hurst/Friesen Day, this is a Board of County Commissioners, but I am leaning towards what long-term is better for the county to manage, and what is better for those residents or their businesses there as an advantage for rates, perhaps.
Yeah, I guess my only input is, you know, in the future, they'll say Habit or Yoder grows, I don't know, they say grows, and then all of a sudden, the city's like, we don't wanna take on anymore, we, you know, we can't take on anymore, or they've outgrown...
Well, that's my view, too.
But, and then if you have ponds, you just make another pond or make it bigger, instead of denying anything. It's fixable. And so, I look at it that way. I don't know, you know, it'd be great, I'd love to send it to Hutchison and say, take care of it, and all we gotta worry about is the pump and the line to get it here, that'd be so awesome. But I, but there's questions in, in the future just like that. Is there, is there, is there an end to what the volume they can take on, and are we ever gonna reach that, and then, and then what do we do?
But it's really hard, like, how do you know it's half the cost or double the cost? Like, your decision might be totally different if it's half the cost to connect to the city wastewater treatment, right?
And what they charge, yeah.
So, it's just a feeling we don't have all the answers, but let's put this on the agenda in three weeks, is that right?
For, page 28, yeah.
Put it on the 28th, you'll have some, some better estimates of the, the estimates to get the estimates, estimate, right?
Gotta wear the word out.
And in that, he's looking for funding.
We'll find the funding.
And if Don gets that quicker, we can always put it on next week, too, if you have the est, I guess, say, estimate of the estimate, or whatever, however Commissioner Friesen explained that.
But it's gonna cost a little bit to get the estimate, too, so, I don't know.
We'll have the Kool-Aid stand or something. Yeah. Now, and Commissioner, just kinda go further back to that history, the reason we hadn't already done this kind of benefit analysis, cost benefit analysis comparison, the study was approved back in 2019, I think, before either Don or I were here in our positions. That was the direction of the commission and the staff at that time, so we haven't, as we continue going down that path, we haven't had a commission, a group of commissioners, whether it was last year or currently, say, we wanted to go a different direction now. That's why we've been showing this as the lagoon system and expansion down there. I know Commissioner Chairman Friesen had mentioned a year, two years ago, about looking with the city, but again, they've also had change in governing body and city management, so it's been hard to get a, not concrete answer, but a good answer. So, I just wanted to give that background, it's not like we staff didn't think about doing a cost benefit or comparison, it's just the process was put in motion before we were in our current...
Nobody is blaming you.
I wasn't, I was on, I was on the commission at that time when we studied that pretty severely. And that was the direction we decided to go.
Yeah. Good plan. You're wrong.
I had side saws, perfect.
Don, is this clear enough for you?
Clear as mud. I'll get you the cost of it, and on what the two systems of cost, I don't know that I can guarantee you I can get you the cost estimate of what's gonna cost for the city to receive it. I don't have control.
Who's the mayor now?
John Richardson.
I'm gonna call him and see if we can...
Do you know anything about their system? Do they have the capacity?
Yes.
And in the near future?
They have, the way, this is what's difficult, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna misrepresent them or whatever, but the way I perceive, what they told me is they have the capacity right now.
Because if they have to build something to get the capacity now or in the future, those costs are gonna come right back at us.
I don't know about the future. I haven't went very far that direction until I get a direction.
Well, and, one thing, too, just because we hook up to the city doesn't mean we have to get rid of the current lagoons, right? I mean, use that for overflow, or, I don't know, so, or is that not even an option, or that would be done?
I don't think we'd leave that place. I mean, there would be some central location where everything would go, or, you know, and then you pump it to the lift station and stuff, but as far as the ponds and stuff, I don't think we'd keep that.
I just don't know if someone's asking anything.
So, what I'd like to do, Don, thank you, I think you're moving on, appreciate it.
Thank you, Don.
I think Randy's had a couple minor things, I'd like to just, what I don't wanna do is delve into a bunch of new topics, but I would like to hear from each commissioner lightning round, just tell me what you'd like to talk about, what your priorities are this week. Randy will take those back, we'll work on getting them sorted out on the agenda through, through the year, and we just, I just wanna hear what your, what your priorities are. Like, we don't, today's not the day to, you know, provide great narrative on that or have a conversation on it, I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna know what you guys want on the agenda. Is that fair? Can I, are you prepared, Mr. Whitehall? What's your priority?
So, two and a half years ago, I came for the Board of County Commissioners, begging for basic freedoms that were guaranteed, or at least I thought were guaranteed to us by the US Constitution. We had, or the commission had, had people in place that were recommending businesses shut down, that masks be forced on people, and were recommending experimental medical procedures for people. And, to be honest, I, I just don't trust the two individuals that were involved in that, and so, you know, I would like to look at, you know, some, you know, setting some clear goals on what the county commission would like, if we keep those individuals, or if not, then, you know, we consider replacements.
You know about the health officer and the physician?
I'm not sure I can name anybody specifically, can I?
I'd rather you not, personally.
Yeah, yeah, so...
That's executive session.
Yeah, but, and, and, you know, not necessarily firing anybody or anything like that, but like, setting some clear goals, because I don't, I don't wanna be in a position, again, where people have to come before the Board of County Commissioners to beg for personal freedoms. I think that government is here to protect people's liberty, not to, I mean, 'cause, you know, I mean, part of the whole thing about America is that our rights are given to us by God through virtue of our humanity, and, you know, I would like... given to us by God through virtue of our humanity. And, you know, I would like people in place that, that respect that and are pro-health freedom rather than people that, you know, are against preventative care and go around to school boards and try and get them scared into locking down and things like that.
Health department policy, is that?
Yes.
Okay. What else you got?
I mean, that's, that's honestly, you know, you know, unless I learn, oh, and, and look at some of these non, nonprofits that we're giving money to.
And I think we, we oughta just distribute that list, Randy, as soon as possible. It keeps coming up. And I think there's some confusion on what, what we fund. Can you do that?
Because, you know, my opinion, if, if they're a private entity and they're raising money, then we don't need to tell property owners, you know, hey, you need to pay 50 cents for a dollar, a dollar fifty more in property taxes because we're giving this money to somebody who can raise money themselves. So.
Okay. Great. Mr. Hearst, you got a, you got a list.
I thought it would be, since we talked about, since you brought this up, was on the agenda. You can read the, the study proposal to initiate NRP for county. Danny, you and I both would like that discussion, I'm sure, with regard to the neighborhood revitalization plan. You can read the rest of these. I won't take time. Mayor's forum, I've been asked to have that, see if the commission wouldn't get that going again.
Just good, good work.
And they got, one thing goes right along with the habit on the second page. Develop a plan to promote habit as a location for moved businesses. That plan would include making sure the chamber considers habit in any potential for businesses for Reno County, especially those suitable for habit. And then on the third page is just a comment I threw in there is, you wanna believe it or not, or think I'm crazy, but we cannot save ourselves into prosperity. Neither can we spend ourselves into prosperity. But we can expect to judicially use the assets available to us to create opportunity for our citizens to create that prosperity.
Thank you.
And will this be attached to the minutes online for future people to see or?
It's notes from a study session. We don't usually do that. It's, I guess, a core document. If someone requested it, we'd give it to them. I don't know if staff would've taken the time to put it on there. Probably not.
Mr. Freezen, might that be better after we get really into this and everybody has a chance to develop their own thoughts.
Yeah. I think there's some point related to work product that isn't generally.
There's notes in the, in presented meeting. It's, it's only one commissioner's opinion though. So that's, I guess, my, like, if you guys ever coordinate completely, if I would be agreed on a strategy, that would absolutely be appropriate to share.
It's a time.
Okay. Yeah. The only reason I was asking was for this because, you know, you know, this is something we're all gonna be reading. So, you know, if we have access to it, then.
It's available to the public.
I think if we put it on the county's page, it would look like this was the county's adopted stance, not just one commissioner's.
Usually if the media wants a copy of or something of whatever we had put out in an open meeting, then they're.
So somebody would be able to request this if they wanted to do a FOIA request.
Okay.
Mr. Parks?
I don't really have anything to share today, honestly. I, you know, the one thing I would say I'd like to see us do, but, you know, we toured all the departments and, and, you know, great length with a lot of them. But Don would attest to this when we went around. I think they do a, a fairly good job of being as efficient as they can. I was really, really impressed. A lot of misconceptions, either whether you get in office or you're just in the public. And so I think you do a great job at that. But I think, we alluded to a, a study session that we came into before we were sworn in, that something sticks in my, my mind. And I think if, if there is one thing I'll throw out today that I'd like to look at, a more in-depth study of the space and programs we provide, whether we need all them programs, whether we need more space. I know there's storage base issues. Health department has a lot of issues. But are we providing adequate services or too many services in, in each one of those kinds of departments? I mean, is there some overlap? I guess if I'm picking on something, not to, to be with you necessarily there, John, but I, I think I'll look across the alley of the courthouse and see whether there's, needs to be more space there or we need to look at some programs there, whether it's everything that the county needs to be providing. Does that make sense? Let's leave it at that.
Mr. Bogner?
Well, you know, this handout was handed out a long time ago. I numbered them thinking we'd get to this a lot sooner. A lot of these we're in the middle of or we've already voted on some things and, and are immaterial at this point. Something that happened to me from the beginning, starting the second day after I announced that I'd be running, or I filed, I started having people come to me on these, on how the health department and some things were handling some sewer projects. And I think if we're looking around, we need to look at that a little bit because it continues everywhere I go. I get a phone call. I get backed in a corner, hey, Don, you oughta be looking at this. Now, what we oughta do with it, I don't know. But I sure think we oughta take a look and come to some conclusions on how to go forward. If it's a citizen committee, like was alluded to early, earlier in another project, where you just sit down and talk. Get both sides together to at least talk. And then decide if there should be something further goes from there. But get them together so they're able to, both sides are able to express why they're doing the things they're doing and the other side why they think more should be being done. I don't think we necessarily have to get in, in the middle of it in the beginning. But there's enough questions and enough people bringing up wherever I go. I think we need to do something about our, our regulatory end of our, our sewer. And I know a lot of it's mandated by state and there isn't a whole lot our local people can do. But if they could sit down and explain why they're doing it, might be an answer. At least it's a start.
Okay. Got sewer policy, sewer, septic systems. What else you got?
Well, of course, most of this has already been, the EMS and the fire districts, we know there's gonna have to be some work done there to bring them up to snuff. I mean, and that's already being mentioned. I know there's an upgrade on security stuff at the jail. I don't know how much needs to be done there, but I'm assuming there'll be further studies and there'll be somebody around that'll be asking for the money to do various things. But I know those are some things that people are, are talking about, or certain departments are talking about. So with that in mind, and I guess our new fire regulations, the, there's some computer problems there yet. People are telling me they can't get in. And I read a little quip in the paper the other day, as of now, we're still calling in like we always did because the system isn't up and working.
They're working on it.
Yeah, that's what it said in the paper. So, I mean, that's gonna have, a lot of that, like I said, that it's, it's already in the works, but we'll just have to continue doing something with most of it. And of course, the other big thing that Ron and I were supposed to and did meet on it was, was the courthouse renovations. And I kinda glossed over that because we're getting pretty deep into it when we were sent to study it.
Tell them how much we think we took off of it. If that's appropriate.
Well, I don't know what's appropriate here, but there was, in studying it, I, I was taking certain things down and trying to eliminate things and even replacing some things to replace what we eliminated that would let us utilize that space. If they will let us do it and people are checking into it, staff members are checking into it, we figured we could get this thing down below 2 million and renovate all the space. Am I close on that? 1.?
1.909 or 1.9.
Something like that. Replace that walkway with an elevator of some kind so that space above the old rooms would still be usable instead of unusable, if they allow us to do that. I mean, old turn of the century buildings had elevators in them. And this is later than that. You would think historically they'd let us do something, but that's still out. Just some ideas that came up. But by eliminating a few things and changing a few things, we're hoping we can get that moved down about, well, what would it be? I added it together here somewhere in the neighborhood of 350,000 or 400,000.
Well, thanks for your, guys' early work on that. We'll get that back on the agenda soon. Mr. Bogner, thanks for those comments that, you know, my, actually, it's like, by the time we got to me, pretty much everything you guys said, had everything on my list. So thank you for saving me the trouble. So I'm gonna work with Randy and kinda try to plan out maybe the rest of the year a little bit and get things on the agenda. Every, every one of these topics we'll, we'll talk about. Some of them probably lend themselves to study sessions. Some are, you know, straight up agenda items. So we'll, we'll get working on that here through the rest of the, the year. And appreciate you guys allowing me to push you a little bit today. I felt like we didn't, we couldn't be here all day. And I hope, I hope the format's all right. And give me feedback either way if it's not what you like. So appreciate you guys working hard today and getting some stuff done. So unless there's anything else, and we'll adjourn the meeting and see you next week.